I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the judging of the decisions.
... through the flag of the United States of America and to the power of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. We do have some special recognitions for you, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bernal for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first recognition that we have is Ryan Tillery. I am so thrilled to share with you that Ryan, he is the first life skills student who now that he has graduated from that program, has been offered a job and is working in our Auburn Food Services. So with your permission, I'd like to invite Mrs. King along with Mrs. Gilvain, the job coach, and Mr. Ryan Tillery to the microphone so we can hear about that.
It's been about three years in the making where we have supported our life skills students here at Auburn Public Schools. Three years at the high school and two years now at Auburn Middle School. And we saw a shining star a few years ago that we wanted to have the opportunity to see if it was possible for one of our life skills students to graduate and then pursue an opportunity of working with us on a regular basis. And we're so excited to introduce Ryan Tillery.
Yes. (applause).
I'm Ryan's job coach, Sarah Gilvain, and I would just love to thank the Auburn School Department for giving Ryan this opportunity. He's a hard, hard worker and the cafeteria workers have been great with him also. So it's gonna be a great asset.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you so much.
Ryan's doing an outstanding job. He's been working with us about three weeks right now, and we're coaching him and learning. He's learning many new things and he's doing it with a great spirit and a great heart. So we're excited.
Any comments from Ryan? Welcome aboard.
I would just like to recognize his family. He is here with them in the audience today as well as his teacher, Mrs. Pireon. They have a number of support staff members. And thank Mrs. Gilvain, Mrs. King, and all of those who support our children. I think this is just a really shiny example of a great thing that we've been doing in the district. So very proud of Ryan and all of us. So the next item of recognition we have with us this evening, some representatives of the We the People team. As you know, they won a wild card in Massachusetts, who will be heading to DC in April. As I've said to you on many occasions before, this is their most impressive program. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Willie Martin Jr. who will take it away and we'll get to see a bit of what We the People is all about.
First off, I'd like to thank everyone for being here today and allowing us to take this opportunity to pretty much explain what We the People is and what it means to us. So recently, we competed at the state competition and we became a wild card. So that means that Massachusetts was granted the second place spot to send to the national competition in April. So every day in school, we prepare and outside of school to get ready for this competition. We'll be competing against the top schools in the nation to read our speeches in front of tons of judges from all different universities and backgrounds. So pretty much, we simulate congressional hearings. We are given a set of topics and we come up with different speeches backed by court cases, amendments, things of that nature. So the part towards DC is we are tasked with raising $50,000 to send 29 students of the We the People team to Washington DC. So pretty much how it works is that our state and our national competition, we get up, we give a formal introduction, we read our question, our speech, which has to be approximately four minutes long, and then we have six minutes of follow-up questions that are generated right off the judges' forms that they come up with. So we don't know what the questions are prior, but we have to be ready to answer them. So we have to have an expansive knowledge of, excuse me, everything that our unit entails. So I will go over a formal introduction of me and my unit. I have two additional members with me for Unit 5. Our other two unfortunately cannot be here right now. But as a unit leader, we placed first in Unit 5 for the state competition, so that was a great success. So our introduction, and then we will have Unit 3 go. So my name is William Wright. I'd first like to thank each and every one of you for being here and taking the time to listen to these speeches that we've prepared. Our unit deals with all different things such as free speech in college campuses as well as the separation of free speech with the morals behind it and the law meaning behind it. Also, it deals with search and seizure of property. Today, we're going to read our Question 2 speech, which deals with the modern formalities of free speech and how it shifted in conjunction with different societal issues that have arisen. So again, I'm William Wright and I plan to study at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and I'm proudly presenting my two other members.
My name is Jacob Landry, and I plan to attend Westfield State University and major in history.
My name is Karen Brower, and I plan on attending Leslie University with a major in music therapy.
My name is Anna Petrovitz. I'm the captain of Unit 3. Unit 3 deals with changes in the Constitution and how those changes affect our government. We will be reading our Question 3 speech today, which deals with political parties and how the political party system affects our government as a whole. I plan to study at UMass Amherst with a major in journalism.
Hi, my name is Matthew Bergman, and I plan on studying business at Coastal Carolina University.
Hi, I'm Kaya Powers, and I plan on studying teaching at Worcester State University.
Hi, my name is Jacob Stokes. I plan on studying executive management at UMass Amherst.
My name is Renee Ordway. I plan on studying athletic training at LaSalle College.
So right now, we will have Karen read our question and show you what we've prepared at the state level that was able to get us such a high mark. And then Unit 3 will go, redo their question and the speech that they have prepared.
So our question is, "Free speech is a cornerstone of American liberties. It may be easy for the government to protect speech we like, however, it is more difficult to protect speech we abhor. What is free speech and what role does government have in protecting or limiting it? How has the meaning of free speech changed over the course of American history? What limits on speech, if any, should be enforced on high school or college campuses?"
From the words of Voltaire...
I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death of your right to say it.
"Free speech is a fundamental right granted to the citizens through the First Amendment and was incorporated at the state level through Getlow v. New York. Free speech has its roots in colonial history, as noted in the 1734 John Peter Zenger case, where a man was tried but acquitted for negative publications. From the development of the nation up until present day, the interpretation of the First Amendment has changed dramatically. Today, free speech and press is shown in a variety of ways such as donating money, burning flags, and playing violent video games, all of which should be protected, not prosecuted by the government."
"Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble. This negative right of speech is liberty that is denied in over 40% of the world's countries. In countries such as Turkey, one can be imprisoned for up to four years for speaking out against the president."
"The fact that this will not happen to the citizens of the US is something woefully taken for granted. It is Congress's duty to ensure that no laws are passed that would hinder freedom of speech. In some cases, history has shown the system of checks and balances failing in American citizens."
"During times of wars and emergencies, speech is more apt to be limited in America. In order to protect the young nation, John Adams passed the Alien Sedition Acts, which prohibited negative speech against the government. During the Great War, the Espionage and Sedition Acts were passed. If one was found guilty of speaking out against the American government, it could result in a $10,000 fine and up to 20 years in prison. The case Schneck v. US decided it was constitutional for the government to do this. Recently, the USA Patriot Act includes provisions that jail those and advocate writ in advice for terrorist organizations."
"The government should always protect freedom of speech, no matter how unpopular the opinion is. For example, in Snyder v. Phelps, the Supreme Court ruled that the Westboro Baptist Church could protest at the funerals of fallen soldiers. In this case, Chief Justice Roberts stated, 'Debate on public issue should be robust, uninhibited, and wide open. Speech on public issues occupies the highest run of the hierarchy of First Amendment values.'"
"Brandenburg v. Ohio in 1969 gave similar rights to the KKK. If laws were passed prohibiting these groups to have free speech, it would not only be a bill of attainder, but a slippery slope for future groups seeking First Amendment protection."
"The Supreme Court has permitted several regulations on free speech, such as time, place, and manner restrictions, and the use of obscene material. Actions such as donating money to a campaign and burning the American flag are also considered free speech as a result of the rulings in Citizens United v. FEC and Texas v. Johnson."
"The controversial topic on whether or not there should be limitations on free speech at high school and college campuses has drastically increased. The argument exists between two sides, one side that demands the censorship of hateful, disrespectful expression, and the other which believes that the First Amendment should be enforced fully. Specifically, in the school system, there are many different issues with freedom of speech."
"In the case Tinker v. Des Moines, students were granted rights to wear clothing protest to Vietnam War. Despite this, many other cases, including Morse v. Frederick, Bethel School District v. Fraser, and Hazelwood School District v. Colmeyer, rule against the use of free speech for students."
"Milo Yanakalas, who believes people should be able to voice racist, anti-LGBT rhetoric, is often met with violent riots on college campuses. He believes in the right to make such controversial points due to the First Amendment. In a similar instance, right-wing blogger Lucian Whitworth should have been allowed to say his piece at the Yukon It's Okay to be White rally. Their points are repulsive, but they should still be allowed to speak if invited."
"Although there should be some limitations on dangerous free speech on a school campus, students should still have the right to discuss their views. At the University of Massachusetts Amherst, a conservative student activism group has filed a complaint to the US District Court claiming that the institution was inhibiting their ability to rally. The campus bans any speeches and rallies if they don't take place between noon and 1:00 p.m. But it is still argued that the policy violates the First Amendment. From the ruling of Whitney v. California, Justice Brandis wrote..."
"Freedom to think as you will and to speak as you think are means indispensable to the discovery and spread of political truth."
Thank you. Thank you.
So for Unit 3, our question is, "If a political party does not have its foundation and the determination to advance a cause that is right and that is moral, then it is not a political party. It is merely a conspiracy to seize power. Do you agree or disagree with President Eisenhower? Why? What ideas and events led to the development and growth of political parties in the United States? Why does the United States have a two-party system instead of a multi-party system like most other advanced democracies? What are the advantages and disadvantages of each type of system? What part do political parties play in today's political system?"
"Stephen Bannon, a former right-wing blogger turned political advisor, once said..."
"An elite is someone who's for themselves and not for the country."
"This statement from Bannon echoes the remarks of former President Dwight D. Eisenhower regarding political parties. Unless a group of people try to advance a cause which they believe to be right and moral, they cannot be considered a political party."
"Eisenhower was correct when he expressed that the function of American politicians and parties is to serve the public purpose. If the party that a politician represents goes against the moral fundamental principles of the American Constitution, the party should withhold any of these principles."
"In his final words to the American people, George Washington pointed out the dangers of political parties. He said parties would distract the public, agitate the community, hinder animosity, and open the door to foreign influence and corruption. Despite his warning, a two-party system soon developed in the United States."
"The basis of the American party system started in the late 1790s and stemmed from old arguments that were made between the Federalists and Anti-Federalists during the Constitutional Convention. The first two American political parties, the Federalist Party and the Jeffersonian Republican Party, formed over the issues of the power of the national government, American intervention in the Napoleonic Wars, the Alien and Sedition Acts, and the National Bank. These topics would eventually lead to major scars between Hamilton and Jefferson. John Adams would also be involved. This was not just an argument of ideas, rather, it was a battle for the future of America. Would we remain a small agrarian community based on the will of the people like Jefferson proposed? Or would we follow Hamilton's vision of becoming a large, commerce-based giant that would filter the ideas of the people?"
"Thomas Jefferson challenged John Adams in the election of 1800, also known as the Revolutionist movement, something monumental happening. But the first time in history, there was a huge difference for power between the two parties." "While the Federalists eventually headed toward extinction, they, along with the Jeffersonian Republicans, would represent the first set of parties in a two-party system."
"Parties both unite and divide Americans around platforms and ideologies. Our winner-take-all, first past the post-plurality electoral system, ensures that we will only ever have a two-party system in the United States."
"This is because each election cycle produces a winner based on whoever wins the majority of votes. Even if a candidate only wins by a small margin, the loser is not represented." "This system especially hurts third parties and designates them to the infamous road spoiler, especially in presidential elections. Famous third-party candidates such as Theodore Roosevelt, Ross Faradot, Ralph Nader, Jill Stein, and Gary Johnson siphon votes from major party candidates, which indirectly helps their opponent."
"A new system that uses multi-party proportional representation, representation restricted based on the amount of votes earned, meaning a loser by a couple of votes is not completely different." "From the Federalists versus the Jeffersonian Republicans, to Jacksonian Democrats versus Whigs, to Democrats versus Republicans, two parties have endured and will continue to endure. Since 1856, the realignment and critical elections, today's two major parties have continuously bored."
"There are many advantages and disadvantages to two-party systems and multi-party systems. A two-party system of government secures political stability by preventing sudden shifts in political trends. Having only two major parties with consistency by linking national, local, and state governments together, it also allows voters to be more informed about the parties since there are less options."
"However, two parties can channel two political disciplines at the same time based on polarization and marginalization of entire voting. This is where the multi-party system is lacking."
"A multi-party system of government allows for a variety of opinions to be represented on the same platform, which enables more political participation from the people and forces parties to form coalitions and work together if they lack a majority."
"Today, political parties act as a linkage institution to better connect the people to their government, immobilize participation, and deliver a proper quality."
"They can help organize and channel passions and interests into government via a party platform."
"They run candidates for office and also raise money."
"A lot of money."
"For the 2016 election, Democrats and Republicans raised over $3 billion for presidential, senate, and house races."
"Our government works slowly by design, however, our two-party system must learn how to compromise and cooperate in order for our democracy to stay open and prosperous."
"Madison argued in Federalist Number 10 that the Constitution would be able to control the effects of factions by factions checking one another. This check has worked far too well today."
Thank you.
So again, we really just want to thank you for the opportunity to present our speeches in front of you and for your ongoing support of this organization.
We thank you for your hard work, and you certainly deserve a lot of thanks, but any comments from the committee?
I'd like to hear the comments. I'd like to hear the comments. I'd like to hear the comments. I'd like to hear the comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I have a question. Now, you have to research your own answers.
Yeah, so the state questions were given, the prompts, and you can find a lot of stuff online as well as in our textbooks that the school provides for us. So you can get all different kinds of topics, both from a right side and a left side, to really make your argument strong and get an unbiased opinion. However, for our national prompts, these prompts are generated by college professors and judges that have been doing this for years. None of it's online, excuse me. So with none of it being online, you solely rely on the group and the knowledge that you have thus far in order to come up with a speech. And we have to come up with three speeches. So it is very intense and very stressful.
Very impressive. Wow. Thank you. I enjoyed listening. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'd just like to say thank you and keep up the good work.
Well, thank you.
That was very impressive. I think you'll do very well at the next competition as well as in life in general and really stay close to yourself. And we make this very proud, and I hope that fundraising goes well. And it's a safe trip, and you have lots of fun, and you're very successful. As far as I'm concerned, it's already been a success. Dr. Bernal?
I would. Through the chair, so this young group of, um, group of young men and women represent the larger group, and it was unable to go this year, but it's always been so impressed. The work that they do, the presentations that they make, they often get comments from the judges about the teamwork that they use and how they actually make their arguments. So those, they're prepared for an event, but as Bill had described, the judges then can ask them any question around their topic. And they really are required to think on their feet, and they do a tremendous job with it. So I know they'll do well down in DC. Did you want to mention any of the fundraisers upcoming?
Yeah, so we're having actually a spaghetti dinner on April 6th. So what's gonna happen is we have really asked for a lot of sponsors in the town and in Worcester to create baskets. So we have all different kinds of raffle baskets. We currently have thousands of raffle tickets that we've been operating and getting ready to sell. So we've been selling those in order to raise money so people can choose which basket they like. And then at the spaghetti dinner that we host, which all of our families will come to and friends in the community, is we will then pick winners for those baskets. So we are doing that as well as getting, um, some companies have been very generous in donating just money to us and different types of products. So with all that, we have tried to be fundraising as much as we can.
Where is this meeting?
It's gonna be held right here in the Auburn cafeteria.
Excellent. Is there a date and time?
Uh, yeah. It's at the 5:00. I believe it's 5:00 to 6:30 on the 6th of April.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1228.83][1228.83](applause).
And we will move on to the office floor. Just one other recognition I wanted to make. I've listed here in your packets a number of art students who continue to be honored, these ones having their work displayed during Youth Art Month at the Worcester Regional Exhibit at Worcester Art Museum. So just want to thank and congratulate all of those students as well as those recognized in the Marvel collection as well. Super job by our kids once again.
Any comments? Say none. We now move on to students' comments.
Okay, so I...
Is everyone asleep right?
Yeah, a little bit. Um, so I'm here tonight as a parent, as a parent with an educational background.
Could you just say your name?
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Shawna McManus. Um, I'm a parent of a kindergarten student at Packard Chauk. And yesterday in line, as I was picking him up, I heard that the budget meeting was tonight, and there was going to be decisions on reducing the first grade class size from four classrooms to three. And when I heard that, I kind of freaked. Not like freak, I was just internally thinking, no, that can't happen. Um, one of the reasons I feel that what stresses me out about it is that we're looking at right now, there's about 24 kids per room in those kindergarten classrooms. When you take away, or when you take away a classroom and they move up as 24, we're gonna have add-ins from the Goddard School, from Montessori's, from who knows where we're moving into town because Auburn is amazing. Um, so what my concern is, is now is that number of 24, 25, gonna move up to 27 or to 28? I personally do not want to see my first grade child in a class of 28. Um, I noticed that this year, he's in a class of 25, which also is alarming to me. When I sent him to preschool, he was in a class of about 15 or under. Since he's been going to Pack, I've noticed a major emotional shift with him. And part of me can't help but wonder if that has to do with classroom size. Um, for kids that may have, um, he was diagnosed with sensory processing delay. For me, I'm wondering if, you know, if there's other children with that type of issue, if they're in a classroom with 27, 28, 29, you don't know. Kids, what's gonna happen to those children? Um, he's crying every night. He doesn't want to go to school. He's, he's crying in the mornings, sadly tapping to like rip them off my shoulder or my legs so that I can get to work. And I'm just concerned. Um, I know that recently, the state report card went out and said that we had, I believe, I'm not totally prepared, only because I just found out, um, but I heard that it said we have 18 per room, but right now, he's in one of 25. So I know that there's a lot of information out there. I only have one article, um, but I know a lot of information out there states that for classrooms in a K-3 setting, you're more beneficial to have those smaller sizes. So if we kept it at four classrooms, that would be 18 kids per room currently, but that's without kids transferring or coming into town or whatnot. Um, so I know that the K-3 years are the most critical. I have a master's degree in education for pre-K to 2. Um, I just feel strongly that if you're moving those classes up and you're keeping them at 25 and you have kids transferring in, that's gonna impact so many students. And I truly feel that, you know, I think he's suffering already. Um, I've, I've been in contact with the school psychologist on, a lot of times, not a daily basis, but, um, I'm having, she had to sign him up for lunch bunch. Um, you know, we're trying to keep tabs on him. He does good throughout the day. But I'm just worried about what other kids are affected by this. You know, I'm just one piece. Um, I'm just afraid that this would impact him as well as his classmates. Um, but definitely, and I'm, and I know that a lot of other parents, when they heard this, this is between yesterday when I found out and today, a lot of parents have all been chattering about it because everybody's so concerned. Um, they just, no one wants to see a class of 27, you know? I just think it's too much. So I'm definitely concerned. Um, I do have an article here that does state that, you know, the children in kindergarten and first grade classes had then, have benefited the most from smaller classroom sizes. And working in the town and or working for subbing as an IA, I've, I've seen the smaller groups just soar. And when, and when you're in that great big classroom size, and especially in first grade, there's gonna be one teacher to that great big class. I'm afraid of, you know, the kids over there that are fiddling, that they can't get to, that they can't, you know, I'm afraid for that one child that just, or two, or three, or four, that just needs that smaller room size. Um, I think that's what I have to say. I, I didn't prepare as much as I would have had I had known sooner. Um, but I just know that for him, I just, I think that would be detrimental. And I'm afraid of, you know, if it is detrimental, then there's gonna be a gap, and then a bigger gap, and then a bigger gap. So I don't want to see him having that gap now, you know, or any other kid for that matter. I'm not just saying mine, but, um, for any child. So I'm, I'm definitely concerned. So...
Appreciate your comments. And Dr. Bernal, she's not gonna speak on that now, we'll do so at the conference.
I'm happy to now if you'd like, like me to. So thank you, Shawna, for raising your concerns. So some good pieces of news. So this is an issue that we monitor really closely in the district. And in fact, just this week, on Monday, Dr. Lozane and I met with the principals of the two primary schools to look at the class sizes anticipated for next year. And both primary school, Packard Chauk, are anticipated to have 24 students per class. Now that's with four teachers at primary and three at Packard Chauk. And this really came about because last year, there was a substantially lower number of children than registered for kindergarten, than is typically the case. So, but what I would say is, I met today, Dr. Lozane and I, an assistant, and met with the, the first grade teachers around this issue, and assured them that this is an issue that we're gonna continue to monitor. And to your point about numbers going up to 27 or 28, um, the school committee has been tremendously supportive of making sure that class size is remained at 25 or below. And should we have an influx of students, evidenced by last year, at primary, they actually had, went over 100 students, we now have 110 students in first grade. So they added a fifth teacher. So I think that, and that was at my recommendation, bringing forward, over the years, depending on the age of the students, additional IAs have been added. So know that we're really closely monitoring this. So we assured our teachers this morning, if, if something changes, we'll come back with a change recommendation to the school committee. But our goal is to make sure that there is equitable access for kids, and, um, the class size numbers of the two primary schools are, in first grade, identical for next year, and in the other grades, sometimes worn off. So we're watching it and will continue to. So not to worry, and I'm happy to keep you apprised or have an assistant to keep you apprised because of the developments and stuff.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
So I just, like I said, I don't want to see it go too high because I do think he's already suffering. He's already, he already can't take it. And I think any increase in that, he's just gonna fall apart.
Well, we certainly will work with you and to make sure, we want all of our kids to be successful, so.
Yes.
We'll work with you for that.
Thank you for hearing me.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments. Good job. Thank you. And we will now move on to our student representative's report. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Between our weekly Nor'easters, even though we have lost a lot of school days, school has remained very busy. has remained very busy. While you went, we had two conferences, one on March third and one on March seventeenth. They were at Boston College High and St. John's Prep respectively. Several members took home Best Elliot Award and honorable mention for Best Elliot. Science Olympiad, we had the official Olympiad at Birmingham State University. March seventeenth, everyone had a good time, none of the results have come back in yet. Spring sports technically began last week about, but tryouts formally began Monday after school. Chores had their concert on March sixth, which seems forever ago, and band, because of all the snowstorms, had the Snow Date to the Snow Date, the Alltown Band Concert this last Monday. And try two officially ended yesterday, and got pretty good game today. And upcoming events, the band has their MICA competition this Saturday. And then there's English MCAS for the sophomores next week, I believe it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And finally, NHS induction is next Thursday, March twenty-ninth.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Ryan? Saying none, thank you Ryan, we will move on. I would now accept, accept. Would say approval of the regular meeting minutes of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. If there's a motion?
Could I have a question on that? The committee's three minutes, I was absent, Ryan, I'm in the minutes as approved in the executive session. Well, I'm sure I would have if I'd been here, but I wasn't here.
So Gail, what was the question?
Um, I was absent on the forty-eighth, and yet I am being quoted as saying yes for going into executive session on the forty-eighth.
Okay. We, we will approve them with that amendment, that Gail actually didn't speak at that meeting. Maybe someone thought they heard her voice, but did not hear her voice.
Or you're so used to it.
Yes.
Well, if I didn't read going into that, then.
Do I have a motion to accept those minutes after removing Gail's comments that she did not make?
Right.
Okay. That sounds great.
We think maybe, instead of me, it was you that said yes going into the executive session.
Based on that, could I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Excellent. That was seamless. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to make you aware, I think I've shared previously that this year, two thousand and eighteen, marks the twentieth anniversary of Education Reform. And the Department of Ed is leading a public relations campaign titled Leading the Nation to be sure that the, all members of the Commonwealth recognize that Massachusetts regularly comes out on top in various assessments. We will be celebrating this recognition in concert with Teacher Appreciation Week, May seventh, the eleventh. But I would encourage you to visit the website of the Auburn Public Schools, on the homepage there is a section regarding Leading the Nation, is actually a, um, PowerPoint that is presented there that really highlights some of the ways that the Auburn Public Schools contributes to the fact that Massachusetts is number one. So just a nice opportunity for Massachusetts to be recognized and the students and staff of the Auburn Public Schools. Next, I'd like to bring your attention to the graduation and dropout rate information that was shared with you. This is supplied on an annual basis from DESI. As I say to you each year, until we have our dropout rate at zero, we will not be satisfied. But I will say that we continue to work very hard with our students, and would point out to you that the five-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, so kids who are given extra time, sometimes they won't earn GED, is actually down to zero percent. So we have more work to do, but I commend the high school team for all of the support that they give to our students to make sure that they can graduate and live proof of well lives beyond those. And including in your packet, really just as an informational piece, the perp people that spend each year, this came out from DESI, this was for FY seventeen, but it lists here in rank order, the amount of money spent per pupil. And as you can see, of the communities that are listed, that Auburn is on the lower end, but I think that it really speaks highly to the work that all of our team members do, that we are fiscally responsible in the way that we spend our money, and our students, you know, as evidenced by We the People Tonight, by Ryan Tillery, and numerous other examples, really do get tremendous value for the money that is spent. We have, which happens on an annual basis, um, through, it used to be called the MIMZI, it is now MIA Mass- Massachusetts Insight, no, excuse me, I'm on the wrong topic. This is, Auburn High School was asked to participate in this study regarding the STEM Advanced Placement and STEM and Advanced Placement English Program. So the state is looking to see what benefits that students are getting from that, are there practices that are consistent? And the UMass Donahue Institute will be doing that. So they're a third party that's gonna come in and conduct this study. So we are not gonna get specific information about Auburn High, instead it will be aggregated. But once that final report comes, I would be happy to share it with you. We certainly believe in the power of the program here, and hopefully that's what shines through regarding this study when it comes to paths. The Auburn Rotary, as you can see, there is a donation letter from Dr. Lopez, a thank you to the Auburn Rotary, donating three thousand dollars to Swanton Road to be used to purchase Phantom Trees. As you know, they had an initiative underway to revitalize the arboretum there and to provide signage. So it is my recommendation that you approve that most generous donation.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the three thousand dollar donation from Auburn Rotary to the Swiss Arboretum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, what are Phantom Trees?
I was wondering if someone was gonna ask me that. I don't actually know, so I can find that out, um, because I'm not certain what a Phantom Tree is, so I will find that out and let you know, I'm curious myself. Life by justice.
Very easy to care for, Gail.
I would think so.
We hope so.
Through your imagination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
There is a letter, um, actually it's not in your packet, but Dr. Lopez let us know that Table Talk donated pies to Swanton Road for Pie Day, March fourteenth. So would like you to, with gratitude, accept that donation as well.
I would entertain that motion.
Make the motion to accept with gratitude the donation of pies from the Table Talk for Swiss Pie Day activities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions about pies?
No, were they good? I thought they were.
Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. Thank you.
And then finally, um, Mrs. Danning from the Packer Chough School let us know the Hometown Bank donated and delivered a variety of items to enrich the satellite program, so I would recommend that you accept those with approval as well.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the donation from Hometown Bank to the satellite program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say in all seriousness, um, thanks for all the donations that we've been receiving. Absolutely. See that score in the business community. Appreciate that very much.
And we do send out a letter, too, right?
We do. Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So as you know, we have our public hearing this evening. I don't have any new updates for you regarding the budget, but we leave that on there just in case anything goes awry, it's hard to tell me. In terms of the Special Education Stabilization Fund, on behalf of Mr. Scobie and Mrs. Harrington, pleased to report that a draft proposal is actually in your packets this evening, and also will go before the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee for their review and approval. I thank those members who participated in this process, as mentioned, Mr. Scobie and Mrs. Harrington, from the Select Board, it was Mr. Holstrom and Mr. Carpenter, from the Finance Committee, it was Mrs. Holstrom and Mr. Kennedy, Mrs. Jacobson and CFO Kazanov, which were there, as were Dr. Lozay and Mrs. Horzicki. And there was great discussion that took place, and I think it is a testament to everyone's commitment to working together, that we have a draft policy, generated in relatively short order, but I think will be a great benefit to the schools, but also the towns as well.
Any comments?
No, I would just go back to the mail statements, it was great working with the team, and obviously everyone at the Table Talk did very much, about special needs population and how we're gonna support them, so it really, it was appreciated.
I would like to thank you and Jess and the rest of the team that worked on this. It seemed like it went pretty smoothly.
It did.
I suppose you had your times, but I mean, for the length of time of you getting together and doing it, it seemed like it went fast and smooth.
It did, it went very well. As I said, it seemed like everyone really legitimately cared about the funding, the kids, well, especially these population. Sure, there was a bump or two in the road at the meetings, but we got through it and we're all the better for it.
I think it'll be awesome to have a fund like that for fund plan expenses and things that come up mid-year or whatever.
Absolutely.
That can be tapped, rather than to die suddenly service. So that'd be great.
Thank you. Moving on.
The strategic plan update, we will meet again on March twenty-ninth. The group continues to make excellent progress. We do have one additional date, April twelve, set aside, but hope to be bringing something to you in May, so I thank everyone who's on that team.
And we now move on to new business.
So included in your packet, I just wanted you to see, I know we had a canceling meeting due to weather, um, the letter that went to Alltown Meeting members inviting them to this evening's public hearing. And also, just as a reminder about upcoming dates, Shrek Jr., I was able to attend at least a portion of it on Friday evening, it was simply outstanding. The middle school students did again, this time under the direction of Mrs. Christine Taylor, it was really very, very exciting, as Ryan reported. We had to shift a bit, we tried to end date due to multiple storms and such. National Honor Society is upcoming, and Community Reading Days are coming, which means that spring is definitely on its way. And I would finally say, Harry Poppins will be the weekend of April sixth, seventh, eighth, and that promises to be outstanding as well, so encourage you to go if you can.
So that. And we now move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Lozay?
So I have a few brief updates for you. The Youth Opioid Prevention Grant Committee met recently to review some of our accomplishments as well as our next steps. As you're aware, we had our kickoff activity this past fall with our Vigil of Hope. We've since purchased a new curriculum for the middle school students, and the teachers are implementing those lessons in grade six, seven, eight, at a minimum this year with full implementation planned for next year. We also have Chris Herring coming on April thirtieth, next month, to present to the Auburn Middle School students, so present to the students during the day, and then in the evening, we will have a presentation for parents and community of all kinds to join us for the evening. Chief Coleman is planning to create a survey to assess the outcome of that particular presentation, and that will be part of what we submit in the next report on our grant. And finally, next year, we plan to purchase a parent-student program that will help us further our focus on prevention of high-risk behaviors. So we'll continue to update that as we move forward. And last Monday, March twelfth, was our annual March Menu of Professional Development. We were fortunate that Leicester High School was able to join us in this venture. Our staff always liked talking to other staff outside of the district, so that was great. I put a copy of the menu in your packet, and as you, as you do that, you'll see the multitude of topics, they range from mental health, to restorative justice, to supporting differences, to technology and science across the board. So really, there was something for everyone that day, actually, people said it was hard to decide because there was so much offered. Our keynote speaker was Chad Hyman, who's an inspirational, world-renowned speaker, he's also an author and a world-record-holding wheelchair athlete. So he came and he shared his story with us about how he had a one-ton failure to pay fall on him and break his neck, and he really shared with us his journey back to having a life of purpose. And through that message, I think it was very strong that whatever challenges we face, we must fear it and we overcome those. And so in our classrooms every day, to always remember that the challenges can be overcome. I have to tell you, I don't believe there was a dry eye in the auditorium that that morning. And I brought you Peach across in your Facebook, and I think you'll find it very inspirational.
Thank you.
And I'd love to give back what you got.
Thank you.
We have two new subcommittees, I think we've mentioned in the past. They are the Homework Committee and also the Start and End Time Committee. So we've held our first Homework Committee meeting last March fifteenth, with the Start and End Time Committee planned for March twenty-seventh, again, due to snow days, we had to postpone that. Dr. Lozay will be chairing the Start and End Time Committee, and I'm chairing the Homework Committee. Each of these two committees have administrators, teachers, parents on them, as well as students if appropriate. It was really great that we saw the level of interest, we had so many people interested in being on these committees, it was hard to decide, we just wanted a really nice cross-section. So I thank everybody who had offered to be on that, and we'll be sure to provide you with continual updates on that as well. And one last item, a few weeks back, on March second, we had a presentation for all of our eighth and ninth grade students that came to the high school. And it was a presentation by Drew Bergman, who works for the organization Minding Your Mind. He spoke from his heart to all of these students about his struggles with mental health, and that they had begun in his age twelve. He also spoke about his attempted suicide, several of them. And it was very compelling and powerful, the students were completely engaged in listening to him, but what I thought was the most important piece of that message was he outlined for them some of the key factors related to his recovery, and how sharing his story is a key point in that, and sort of they should have some significant people and support system that they can share with. We hope to bring additional speakers, each speaker from that organization has a different sort of ideology, and they come and speak on different issues, anxiety, depression, but we also were able to have that organization come on the March TV day for our staff and talk about citizen health and high-risk behaviors as well. So I think it's a great organization, they actually are doing a lot of this free because they got a grant, so we're fortunate to be in on that, and we hope to be able to bring them back again and let you know. That's it for tonight.
Excuse me, Dr. Lozay, what was the name of that organization again?
Minding Your Mind.
Minding Your Mind.
Along around mental health. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Lozay? No. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Thanks for the vote.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Now what we've all been waiting for, business and financial, this evening.
Hi. Good evening. Um, in your packet, I provided a unitary budget report dated March fourteenth. Any sort of questions? And along with that, I have a list of transfers, most of them within series, and a few between series. I'd like, and I think it's comfortable, I've seen that motion of the transfer between the series.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also provided a revolving account update in your packet as well, that's dated March fourteenth, for these, um, collections, revolving dates.
Saying none.
Um, in your packet, um, I also have a warrant table, um, where, um, Gail was kind enough to kind of sign, um, on, um-
A snow day?
We had a warrant date on, um, March thirteenth, and because of all the missed readings, she came in and signed, so I just wanted to make you aware of all the times that she came in, so I provided that in my packet as well. And lastly, um, as we customary would do with, um, gifts, we accept, we have two grants that were awarded, and I'd like to just ask you acceptance of those. The Auburn Middle School has been awarded a clean energy activity day grant, eighty thousand, most of the clean energy activity day offered by the school. And the class of two thousand and nineteen has been awarded a grant from the Broder Foundation to purchase, to purchase an outdoor movie screen to benefit the entire district.
I would entertain a motion to accept those grants.
I'll make the motion to accept the Mask Clean Energy Grant awarded to the Auburn Middle School and the Broder Foundation Grant awarded to the class of two thousand and nineteen, as presented by the business member.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
I've been fine, you're the only one called for that.
We now move on to policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packet, there are five- So in your packet, there are five policies for your review and acceptance. The first one referenced earlier is the Special Education Stabilization Fund. The four remaining ones are part of the ongoing work that we do of our review of them, some coming directly from DESI, and then they ensure to personalize them so they reflect what we do in the Auburn Public Schools. So it is your choice whether you wanna take them. I would ask you to do DIBA as a first reading, since that is a review policy that will come back. The four others you could do together if you agree to update them, because that requires support review funding.
I would entertain a motion to accept DIBA, Special Education Stabilization Fund on first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. I would entertain a motion to bundle the other four policies. I'll make a...
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the bundle of the, the policies as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. Oh, we do need to say this session, okay. I would entertain that motion.
For the Mass General, all checked for thirty, I recommend, uh, we go into executive session, section twenty-one, eight-two, to conduct strategies for negotiations with the, in non-renewal process.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will call it out. Stop them.
Yes.
Something?
Yes.
Sorry. It's all right.
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Scobie?
Yes.
And I think, um, rather than have all these individuals leave, we could step out into, oh wait, it's very brief.
Sounds good.